Welcome to the City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, January 15. I call this meeting to order. Everyone, all council members are present except Mary Rayum, who's absent and excused. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull off of consent? So, no changes to meeting agenda? The public engagement opportunities are next on the agenda? I'm waiting. There are none right now. I would have repeated what you were saying, but I couldn't hear it.
Sorry, there was just one, and it was the volunteer opportunity for the service day, for Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 21 at North Creek Forest.
Okay. Super. Thank you so much. City manager reports. No. Council committee reports. Councilmember McAuliffe. So, if it's not about a council committee, I'd ask that we wait and talk about it during council conversations. Thanks. Yes. Councilmember Zornis.
Quick one, because LTAC is going to be getting an update on our budget and where the website is in February. The only thing to add to that is that the snowflakes on Main Street are being permanently retired, and LTAC is figuring out what will be done for next December.
Okay. Councilmember McNeil, do you have any updates?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, I attended the Regional Policy Committee, January 9. We had a pretty robust conversation around solid waste, which I think we're going to hear about today as well. But we reviewed the upcoming agenda. This is the regional policy, so we deal with things regionally, and we hear about different issues that happen throughout a region. So, upcoming this year, we're going to hear about land conservation, E-911 strategic planning. We'll be hearing about homelessness, mental illness and drug dependency, Veterans and Human Services levy that is coming, regional transportation. There'll be a pretty robust discussion around regional transportation. One of the things that are brought up in the Regional Policy Committee meeting was to see if we could have the members of ETP, Seashore, and Skateboard come together as a group and meet and talk about the transportation issues that we have throughout all of our communities across the east side and the south side. So, we talked about that. One of the other issues that came up was the parks levy, the impact that it's going to have on our cities that the county might be putting forward. New council member elected to the RPC is our very own council member, Dombowski. So, he is now the chair on the RPC and also the chair of the King County Council now. So, I think we'll be very well represented at the county now. During PIC, we had, and I'm sorry, hopefully, I'm not going to go too long here. I have a few updates. PIC, we had an emergency management update from all the different, a few of the different local management systems around, so I sent everybody information on that. Seashore, we had a presentation from WashDOT on driver usage, how much driver usage is up, transportation, the assets, et cetera. So, there was a lot of information. I will send an update on the different things that we talked about during the Seashore Committee. And then also on ETP, they talked about the same things on ETP. This past, we had a presentation from King County Metro Parking Permits Program, so I'll send that information around the council as well. So, those are my updates. Thank you.
Great. I have two. The PSRC Transportation Policy Board, we had a lengthy discussion and presentation from the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency about proposing a clean fuel standard. We are the only state on the west coast that does not have a clean fuel standard. And one of the things that Mr. Kenworthy, who runs the agency, said that really resonated with me is he often has people asking him, "What's the difference if we have a 1.5-degree climate change increase or a 2?" And the difference is pretty stark, because if we have a 1.5-degree increase in temperature, we may actually get to keep some of our coral reefs. At 2, there's no hope. I thought that was very stark and enlightening. The clean air fuel standard would have the greatest impact on our regional air quality. And also, despite the fact that it may raise fuel costs by 2 to 3 cents, when it comes to equity, it actually would be helpful, because the issue of negative health impacts are greatest on populations that can least afford to move away from the negative impacts of air quality and also deal with the health implications. Some examples of biofuels include biodiesel, which is made from waste oils such as cooking, ethanol, which is made from corn and sugar, and renewable natural gas, which currently in this region, we have from our landfills. They tap into the landfills and take the methane and sell that as fuel. And then another piece that's not really biofuels would be the use of electric vehicles, because it does cut down on tailpipe emissions. And then there was a discussion about the Alaskan Way viaduct closing, which I'm sure we're all enjoying hearing about on the news ad nauseam. And then finally, on ETP, I know Councilmember McNeil reported, but I wanted to congratulate him as the current vice chair of ETP. So, I think you're going to do a great job. Thanks for stepping up. And that's it for my council updates. I think we're going to have to take a, let's say, a 10-minute break, because we're having issues with the projector, and so we need to deal with those technical problems. So, we'll be back at 6, well, let's say, 6:20. Welcome back to Bothell City Council. From our technical difficulty break, I apologize that it was longer than we needed, but if we don't, if we say a time, it has to be the time we say, so. So, now we'll be getting a staff briefing on solid waste and Waste Wise from Sabrina Combs.
Good evening, council. My name is Sabrina Combs, and I'm the Sustainability and Projects Coordinator in Public Works. And tonight, I'm just going to be giving a solid waste update. So, most of our planning occurs with the MSWAC program. And MSWAC, as you know, is the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, and I represent the city of Bothell at that committee. It meets once a month, and at those meetings right now, we are talking about the King County Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan, which we hope to have completed in March and be able to present to you after that for adoption. We will be having King County Solid Waste staff come and present to you. And then we have an organic summit that they are planning. They are going to invite specific people to participate in that, and that's to discuss the challenges with contamination in organics, market demands, and capacity right now. We have a lot of material being produced, but not a lot of it is being purchased. And in addition to that, food or organic material is one of the number-one things that is being buried at the landfill, so we need to address that as well. We also are going to be recommending items that we want to ban from recycling carts due to the changing rules with recycling that's been coming about over the last year. And then we're going to be monitoring and suggesting that we support or recommending that we support upcoming legislation that's coming out of the House or the Senate. And then there's reviews and recommendations for the Responsible Recycling Task Force and some of the things that they've come up with from that report. So, I'm going to start with that. But first, the meeting dates that we have for the MSWAC meetings, it is a monthly meeting, but here are the dates. Typically, when I come present on this, people ask, "When are the next dates?" And these are the dates of the meetings. They are monthly. Just a note that we don't typically meet in November or December, so. So, the Responsible Recycling Task Force, there are six goals in the report. The report just came out, and I am currently working on the meeting notes from MSWAC that includes a link to the task force report, and I will get that out. It's going to include all the details for the report. It includes these six goals as well as 27 action items. So, it is a lot to take in, but it really focuses in on these types of goals, like establishing the responsible recycling policies, those policies that we need to have a successful program, the infrastructure that's needed, creating harmonized recycling programs and messaging. This is really important, because I may work in one city and live in another, and I need to know when I go up to that bin that I know I'm putting it in the correct bin, increase demand for recycled materials and making sure they're being produced in the right way and recycled properly, and then creating clean and marketable feedstocks. We have a huge contamination issue right now, and making sure that those materials aren't, say, collecting mold on the way to a processing facility overseas. Then improving the upstream design of materials. So, MSWAC is tackling these goals on a monthly basis. They're going to be handling a goal per month from January to June. So, this month, we tackled the first goal and talked through the different action items that were under that goal and what we needed to do to work on them. So, as part of the recycling task force, what they're doing with all of the groups that are working together is they also formed a consortium. And the education consortium really works on communicating with the public and telling, giving us the tools so that we can help people do things the right way. They are people who work either for government agencies such as cities or Seattle Public Utilities or some other agencies, and also haulers, those who work on the communication team. So, one of the things they developed to make it easier is the new policy of "empty, clean, and dry." This messaging campaign has allowed us to really talk to the community about, "Are your materials empty, clean, and dry?" It's a consistent message we can use on everything. One of the things we've used on our messages for social media is "keep it clean" with a hashtag, so that people have kind of a funny way of thinking about it. We also, with Emily being, working in our water conservation side of the house for sustainability, what she also helps us remind people about is, "It's a little bit of water. You don't need to fill that jug all the way, but we do need to get that food debris or that liquid debris out of the container before you put it in." So, this is a standard message that we remind people about. Then what we're doing, too, is with this educating in new ways, so we took that messaging and turned it into a postcard, and we also added some other messaging for postcards like that. And what we did with these is we targeted specific neighborhoods with the messages we were hearing. So, whether it was recycling your Christmas trees recently, and that, we used a Whoville kind of theme, so it reminded people to untrim their trees from Christmas stuff or recycle your holiday waste. The other big message that we're getting from the consortium is "keep it loose." Because of past practices, people were taking their recyclables and bagging them or putting them in another container or doing what we like to call Tetris. They were trying to pack as much back into that box that they had, but that makes it harder to process at the facility. They're not going to rip open that bag. They're not going to pull that box apart, so we need items to be put in loose. So, that is another postcard reminder we did. And what we've done is with audits or neighborhoods that have been identified, we're targeting them specifically with more education to help them do it right. So, some of the other things that are being recommended from both the recycling task force and MSWAC and SWAC is that they are recommending that we remove some items from our recycling carts. So, the items that they're talking about right now are plastic bags, no more bagging your bags in Bothell potentially, and then the shredded paper. So, the recommendation letter is coming out soon. And the reason for this is that plastic bags create a problem in the processing at the MRF. They're not able to get them through the system as fast. The other problem is we have processes who actually handle plastic bags and film specifically. So, you can take them back to the store for that, or you can use a reusable bag, and you don't have that problem. Shredded paper is also another thing that causes a problem with the machinery. So, they want those items removed from the recycling carts to prevent that problem. There's the bag. So, the bag ban update is new statewide bag ban legislation is coming up, and more than 19 Washington cities have already signed on to this. The new legislation would include some components of, you know, if you bring your bag, you don't have to pay the fee. It also includes a 10-cent fee, because they found out through research that 5-cent fee is not enough incentive, but 10 cents drives people to bring their bags. They also would exempt meat and vegetable plastic bags from the bag ban. And then the fee would also be waived for individuals on food assistance programs or paying with EBT. So, this is some legislation that's being introduced in hopes to make a statewide program for this. Community shred events are returning to Bothell because of the bans that are happening with recycle carts. We heard the message. We also found out that through the different processors that there's a higher recycle market value for these items. So, when the paper is actually shredded through the commercial shred machines, it actually has a higher value. So, what we did was work with the RIM Committee here internally with our city staff and bring back the community shred events. So, the community is very excited about this. This is something that we get calls about every year. People want to have that opportunity where they can come and bring their items to be shredded. As part of this event, though, we will also be reminding people about which items need to be shredded and which don't. So, we'll also use this as an educational opportunity. So, some of the events we have due to some of these changes and ways to assist the community in doing the right thing is we have the 2018 community events are January 1 through November 30. We have our annual recycling event at Shoreline Recycling and Transfer Station, and that event is for residential customers. And what it allows the citizens to do is, if they have those large items that are bulky and they don't know how to recycle them, they're hard to recycle. They do have the stores as a resource, as we know, but this is for more of the items. Like, I have a washing machine. I got a new one. The old one's sitting somewhere in my house or in my backyard, and I don't know what to do with it. They can actually take it through this voucher program to the Shoreline Recycling and Transfer Station, and they have some money towards getting that recycled correctly. We also have the Waste Mobile Events, which are six times per year at the Seattle Times Building. This is a great event. It allows people to get rid of their hazardous materials and get those out of their home. We also offer a checklist on the website that divides up the different items by rooms so that they can kind of go through the house and figure out what they need to take back for that event. Then on March 23, we have the Repair Cafe at Bothell Library. This is offered through the King County Solid Waste, and it is a great event that allows people to choose alternative options to getting rid of items. At the Repair Cafe, you can bring that broken item, as you see in the top photo, and somebody's there to assist you in repairing it, fixing it, so it has another life, which is really great for the community. Then we have the shred event that I talked about, coming back on April 20. We're very excited about that. And then on August 10, we have Sustainamania here at City Hall, and that is a community outreach event where people can learn about recycling, the changing rules, and other sustainable activities in their community. And we're hoping to have a shred event at that event as well, or we will be adding one in the fall. I also wanted to give you an update on Waste Wise. So, in 2018, we launched the Waste Wise program. So, in 2018, we launched the Waste Wise program with Recology Clean Scapes. We had five properties that signed up, 390 units, that's a total of 390 units that were part of the program. The Recology Clean Scapes staff was able to speak to 118 of the people in those units. So, they were able to really talk to them about, "Here's your bag to recycle better. Here's the items you want to recycle and put in those bins. Here's your food scrap container so that you're doing that correctly," and get those units up to speed with how to do a better job in their containers. In 2019, our goal is to sign up three more properties. And we also want to provide some additional reminders to Waste Wise properties. As you saw with the postcards, we're finding it's a successful way to remind people what to do. They get in the habit, or the rules change, and they need to know that information. The other thing is, we're looking at benefits we can provide to Waste Wise properties for signing up. So, because you're a Waste Wise property and you've got your tenants doing the right thing, we're reaching out to them to get new tenants onboard, as well as doing things like looking at holiday tree collection for them next year, so that they have a way to assist those customers in doing a better job. We're also working on increasing our cart tagging program with the recent ordinance that we created here in Bothell. Our goal is to really do more onsite audits, increase our partnership with code compliance, so that we're really educating people with postcards like this and telling them the good and the bad of what to do in their cart, but also then working on cart tagging so that they learn more about how to do it correctly, so we get a better material in those carts, and it's not contaminated by other materials. With that, we're also doing the audits. And so, recently, we used this postcard. We went to the Holly Hills neighborhood, did a walk-through, looked at the carts, saw what we found, took some photos, and were able to develop an educational piece that really spoke to that neighborhood about the items we were seeing. And then, continuing to look at other educational reminders we can give to the community through social media, the website, and other tools. And we do all of this through the grants that are funding our programs. So, we have three grants. We have the King County Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant, our Local Hazardous Waste Management Program Grant, which focuses on hazardous education and using less items with toxic material. And then, we have the Department of Ecology's Solid Waste Funding Assistance Grant. So, all of these grants help fund our programs for our staffing, for our part-time sustainability staffer, as well as outreach and education, the program materials we need for these programs, and community events. Do you have any questions?
Thank you for a great presentation, and I want to thank you and your staff for working so hard on these are really important issues. Does anyone have questions? One not remembering the question. Oh, well, really good information. I know at my house, I took pictures so that I could show some people in my house what they're doing wrong recycling, so appreciate it.
It helps.
Bye.
Thank you.
So, next is SR 522 Stage 3 update from Rita Hu.
Good evening, Council. I'm Rita Hu with Public Works Department. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on the SR 522 Stage 3 project. SR 522 is a multimodal corridor project, and it is also part of Sun Transit Bus Rapid Transit Project. It is located between west of the 96th Avenue North East and 83rd Place North East in Kemmo. The length of the project corridor is approximately 4,300 linear feet, and key project elements including roadway widening, business access and transit lanes, retaining utility undergrounding, sidewalk and planter, sanitary sewer waterman, and stone drainage improvements, traffic signal improvements, center median, as well as street lighting. This is a typical section of the roadway section, and there will be a turn lane or median in the center of the SR 522. There will also be two through lanes and one pass lane on each side of the center median. In addition, there will be a five-foot planter and five-foot sidewalk on the north side of the SR 522. Project status: We are currently advertising this project for bids. The advertisement was published in the newspapers last Friday and will be published again this Friday, January 18, 2019. Project is scheduled: Bid opening is scheduled for February 1st. Sun Transit funding approval on March 14th. Basel City Council to a work construction contract on March 19. We expected to issue a notice to proceed in early May 2019. This project is going to take about 18 months to complete, so the physical completion is anticipated to occur in December 2020. Estimated construction cost: Construction contract is estimated in the range from 20 to 23 million. Construction management cost is about 4 million. Altogether, the estimated construction cost is in the range from 26 to 29 million. Funding sources: National Utility District will be paying for the sanitary sewer and waterman replacement costs, which is about 1 million. Electrical utilities: There are seven electrical utilities within the project limits. Their electrical systems will be converted from overhead to a joint trench, and the estimated cost for this conversion is about 1.5 million, which will be reimbursed by all the electrical utilities involved. All the construction costs which are not reimbursed by the electrical utilities or utility will be covered by Sun Transit. So, estimated funding for this construction is in the range of 26 to 29 million. Potential traffic impact: Land closure is expected. Single land closure will be permitted in either direction, but only during the off-peak hours. Traffic shifts are anticipated. During construction, all the traffic are expected to be moved toward north side or south side of the SR 522. This is in order to create work zone and possibly maintain two lanes open in each, two lane traffic open in each direction. Two existing left turn parks are to be closed. During traffic shifts, eastbound traffic will not be able to turn left into the Everwood Apartments or onto 91st Avenue Northeast. A detour plan will definitely be provided, as well as variable message size will be set up prior to construction. In summaries: This project will provide rural improvements, including adding business and access transit lanes along SR 522 between 96th Avenue North East and 83rd Place North East. This project is part of Sun Transit Bus Rapid Transit Project, which is scheduled to open for service in year 2024. Sun Transit will pay for all construction costs which are not covered by or reimbursed by others. Construction is anticipated to start in spring 2019. It is going to take about 18 months to complete the construction of this project. Potential traffic impact is expected to occur during construction. Project staff will be working closely with contractor and provide early traffic notifications or detour plans via email, social media, as well as variable message side. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Are there any questions from Council? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, it seems like most of this work is going to be, most of the traffic impacts will be off-peak, is that correct?
Off-peak, yes. The land closure will only take place during the off-peak hours.
Okay, fabulous. And then, you'd said that Sound Transit is picking up the majority of the costs of this that's not being reimbursed by other entities, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, there's no, so this work is not costing the city any money?
That's correct, for the construction phase.
Okay. It's a great partnership there, isn't it? I like that. The, let me see, let's see, so we're supposed to be done 2024?
No, December 2020.
December 2020?
Yes.
Okay. I must have made a note on something else here, okay. Traffic control. And then, you mentioned the sidewalks that are going to be along there as well?
Yes, sidewalk will be placed on the north side of the SR 522.
Okay, and so, that's, the pedestrian sidewalks would be connected north side all the way in, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, fabulous. And then, how many sections along 522? And you might not know the answer to this, but the reason I'm asking this question is, it seems like we're connecting a piece here in Bothell.
Yes.
How many pieces are left to make the connection all the way through 522 up to 145th? Do you know by chance?
145th. Jason, do you have an answer?
So, yeah, Sound Transit's working with the other agencies along the corridor to complete their BRT route all the way from I-5 and 145th out to U-Doc Campus and essentially into Bothell. So, this Stage 3 project that we have is one component of it. It's the first early phase that's going to construction, so it's a big early win. It's a moment that we can show Sound Transit, "Hey, we're doing this. We're getting out. We're doing what we said we were going to do." So, they're working with Lake Forest Park and Shoreline to make the improvements along there in respect to the project, to provide the BRT by 2024, and that's the 2024 number you mentioned earlier.
Okay, that's where I got that, 2024. So, seems like we're out in front of what we're trying to do here locally in Bothell?
Correct.
Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, is there any other improvements along 522 that we would need to do to complete the BRT with Sound Transit, or is this the last piece within Bothell?
There's two more projects identified in the CFP in support, or maybe even three in support of the BRT. One is a parking structure, which really is minimal input from capital projects, as far as us doing the project. There's a project along 522 between 96th and 180th, sort of along the Yakima Fruit Market section. That's going to be the next project that we start having discussions with Sound Transit on, as far as us developing and what that project looks like there to support their BRT through there. And then, the last one is sort of how the buses trans, go through downtown, as you've been briefed earlier with some of the other Sound Transit briefings. So, what projects come out of that workshop and that process will be identified.
Okay, well, fabulous work. I know we were doing, trying to do a lot of work, but being proactive in the work that you guys are doing with Sound Transit and others, hopefully, they're taking notice that we're a strong partner in this, and we want to make sure that we're looking out long-term, because as many have said, this is our light rail, and we want to make sure that it works for all the constituents that we have here in Bothell and around the region. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had a brief question. So, I'm just trying to visualize what the actual impact is of this project. So, it's expanding the roadway wider to the south side?
Yes, to the south side.
So, part of that will be, I assume, cutting into the forest between the road and the Burke-Gilman Trail?
That's very correct, yes.
I just want to prepare people, because when trees start coming down, people start getting anxious. So, will that be replanted in the future after it's complete?
Yes.
Okay. I'm relieved to hear that it's, the closures are only during off-peak hours, because I was starting to envision Bothell's version of the Viadoom, and it was scary. So, great work. Thank you very much for the briefing. Okay, so, we're moving on. There are no, currently no visitors signed up for comments. Anyone want to change their mind? Very firm shakes, okay. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion? Motion made to pass the consent agenda by Councilmember McAuliffe and seconded by Councilmember McNeil. Please place your votes. Motion passes unanimously with Mayor Ream absent and excused. Wow. There goes the agenda. There's one, there's one item left. I'm so relieved we don't have to talk about all those contracts. All right, so, moving on to AB 19-019, the quarterly update on progress towards council goals, eighth quarter of the 2017-2018 biennium. City Manager, you have the floor.
Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council, this is your eighth-quarter update for the council goals that were established at the beginning, sort of the late 2016, reaffirmed in early 2017. We developed this scorecard as a mechanism to report back to you on a quarterly basis, the work that staff is performing towards the accomplishment of your goals. And so, this wraps up the 2017-2018 goals for the council. What you'll see come before you on February 5th is your new goals that were established as part of the budget process and new strategic objectives related to those goals. That will be an opportunity for the council to take a look at those, make sure those strategic objectives are the things that you want us to be working on for the next two years. But this document basically wraps up our work, and I'm really, I'm really proud of the work that we all did together. And I just thought that I'd highlight, I've been through several of these over the last two years. Each time we do a quarterly update, we try to highlight some of the accomplishments that we've had, or some of the things that we're working on. But I thought that I would just list a few that I think are particularly noteworthy, and I think things that the council are proud of as well. You adopted an affordable housing strategy. You did your first mandatory affordable housing zones and started working on the accessory dwelling units for affordable housing. We focused internally on hiring and retaining some pretty amazing staff, really looking for qualified and talented individuals to work in this organization. And our training was focused on their technical skills, as well as their leadership skills, so that we can have succession planning here in the organization and to continue to grow this talent so that we have future leaders for years and hopefully decades to come. From a technology standpoint, we upgraded our police technology. We implemented a new system in the Parks and Rec Department, and also put the fleet and facilities into an asset management system. We initiated the work on our HR timekeeping system, which will be worked on heavily in 2019, and we're almost ready to launch utility billing. That's been a very, very heavy lift. And one of the things that we've learned, and council was gracious enough in the 2019-20 budget, is we've tried to do a lot of these projects with existing staff, and it's not working. So, we're taking staff that's already completely filled from a day-to-day basis with their workload, if not overtaxed, and then we're putting these implementations on top of it. And so, for 1920, we added a Parks Limited Term Position, because they're going to be moving on to the asset replacements or asset management system. We didn't do that for HR and timekeeping, and these are the kinds of things that we're learning, that we are so lean in this organization. We're going to be talking about that in February, how we manage this workload with the constraints that we have. But utility billing is almost there online. We created a tourism program. They did an audit on the existing program, and we're launching a new brand. It's very exciting. I'll actually be having a little preview of that in tomorrow's State of the City. We hosted some events and some concerts. Our concerts were amazingly attended. We did some of the Kid Series concerts. We all learned about, now I can't remember his name, Casper Baby Pants. That's, who knew? That was one of the biggest turnouts we have. It was absolutely fantastic. We hosted a terrific Fourth of July event, Safe Halloween, and some other events, just really well-attended. This community really enjoys events, and we have a really good time hosting those here in our community. We remain as a staff committed to transparency, community engagement, and our regional engagement as well. The council serves on many regional boards, and what we heard over the last two years was a lot of welcoming and happiness throughout the region that Bothell was back at the table, both from an elected official standpoint, as well as the work that the council supports us doing, going out in the region and being active and building those relationships and those partnerships. We look forward to that continuing in 19 and 20. We launched our public art program. We installed the four pieces of art here at City Hall. We also have Art Now here at City Hall, and the Art Commission continues to look at some really interesting things to do in the years ahead. For community health, I just cannot talk enough about the Navigator Program. This has to be one of the most impactful things that's happened in public safety in my time, I think, in local government, and Councilmember Agnew has said the same thing. This really is changing how we deliver our public safety services and how we can care for our community and some of the crises that we're seeing with the folks in our community. for our community and some of the crises that we're seeing with the folks in our community. We're just really proud, and I'm particularly proud of the police chief's work in securing funding again and again, really leading an effort regionally to get that funding and start to make this program happen. So I think something that the council should be incredibly proud of, the leadership that you've shown and the support you've given us in launching that program and helping it be successful in this region. From economic development, we focused on our downtown properties and continuing the cleanup that's so critically important for the downtown but also our economic health. We initiated the Canyon Park visioning process, and we completed Main Street, and it is one of the nicest-looking main streets around, and we're just seeing that flourish and watching the businesses really flourish and really enjoying that infrastructure there. And if you haven't been downtown, we installed the new little reflectors by those parking lots. So let's see how those work, if those don't help our community in navigating those parking stalls a little bit better. So appreciate public works and continuing to look at creative solutions for our community. Levy and Bond, I mean, wow. Again, you know, we thanked our community for the big hugs and the support that you gave us as part of that. We have a lot of work to do for implementation, but as we keep saying internally, it's a great problem to have. And so we look forward to the work that's related to both the bond and the levy. Personally, I'm really proud of the budget process. Again, I want to thank the council for over 10 hours of time during the budget study sessions and the work that we put in together to really understand this budget and to really embrace the challenges, the financial challenges that we're having. We still have some tough things to face ahead, but I feel really confident that together we're going to figure out the strategies necessary to have long-term fiscal health for our community and our organization. And finally, we purchased the last five acres of the Wayne Golf Course, and so we own 89 acres, saved in perpetuity for our community. We look forward to looking at those front four acres and seeing what we can do from an economic development standpoint. I thought those were some pretty great highlights. The executive team is here if you had any questions in particular about any of the items. But again, this is our closeout, our eighth quarter, and then we'll be bringing 2019-2020 to you on February 5th for, again, your discussion. This is a draft, and so it's an opportunity to look at the strategic objectives we've put together and suggest to work on to accomplish our goals for the next two years. So we look forward to that discussion on February 5th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if you have any questions in particular for any of the team.
Questions, anyone? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, I have some questions, but mostly comments, if that is okay. So you did not recognize the lighting of the Christmas tree, which the city of Bothell actually gave quite a bit of support to that, and it was a wonderful turnout of thousands of people. So I did want to highlight that as well, as one of our very, very popular events that our community appreciates. My question is on the community health and the Navigator. I'm very impressed with that program. I know the police chief has worked very hard to get funding. Would it sometime be benefit to the council to have a presentation from the Navigator so we could kind of really get a feeling for the impact on our citizens?
I think it's a great idea. We're working on building that program now, and I think we'll put that on the agenda for the next couple of months and bring you an update. Thank you for asking.
And I think I might have one more. Oh, yes, of course. Progress on the selling of the property titled A.
Lot A, we're working, so we hired a real, commercial real estate broker, and we're working to get a listing for Lot A.
So we're not, it's not listed yet?
It's not listed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I just got a couple compliments, comments to make. I guess I will just start by saying that you mentioned a lot of things there, and you talked about the regional work that we do. And we do, you know, the council members on this council do do a lot of work regionally, and it is noticed. But we don't do that without being together. And as much as we sit here and we do the things that we do as a council, it takes the entire city staff to make this happen for the community. And I, on behalf of myself and my family, as being constituents in the city of Bothell, want to thank the city of Bothell for everything that they do for the sense of community. Because going out into the community, we hear that word. If you remember going back to our goals, we talk about community being the largest word in that little chart. I hear it all the time with a sense of community. So it's not often these council meetings aren't watched, people don't get to see what we're doing and the work that we're doing out within the community. We don't, most of us, a lot of us, everybody up here doesn't really go around talking about the work that we're doing regionally, we just do it. And so it's to go out and listen to community, hear what we're doing, see what we're doing, and it be acknowledged is a special thing. And a lot of cities at the table don't put in the work that we do, they don't have the accolades, but the most important thing to me is it feels special to be part of Bothell. And I think we should all be thankful to be in the community as welcoming and as community bases that we are here. So I want to thank the staff for a great three years, and I look forward to many, many more. So thank you for all of your support and everything, all the departments, what you guys do for us. Thank you.
So I wanted to stress how important I think it is for us to get regular updates, to remind us what our priorities are, and to celebrate what we accomplish. Because I think so often we're on to the next thing, the next thing we want to accomplish, there's so much we all want to do, and it's really important for us to look back and see what we've accomplished and how much work it took to get there, and maybe learn from our mistakes or things that carried, carrying forward, carried forward, we can kind of do better and more efficiently. So I want to thank you, previous to this, we never got any updates on our goals, and I think it's really important to keep our eye on the ball, and I just really appreciate it. I'm sure the rest of council does as well. So thank you, thanks to all of staff as well. So with that, I guess we're going to launch into our first-ever council conversation. So I had a brief conversation with the mayor, giving me last-minute directions, and he thought, I know we have some topics actually that we can talk about, but I think the first thing we probably should have a little bit of a chat about is how we'd like this to work. Do we need ground rules, or is everyone comfortable just kind of letting the conversation flow? Does anyone have any input for me before we just kind of see how it works? Just, okay, let's just see how it works. So for the community, the reason that we've done, put this council conversations on the agenda is because council never has an opportunity to talk. You know, we give our council our committee updates, but that's not an exchange. Because of the OPMAs laws, we cannot have conversations as a body with more than three of us at a time, and there are really big issues, and just updates that we need to provide each other. So that's the goal of this new addition to our agenda. So with that, would anyone like to begin or share something?
So yes, thank you, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to share with our community some of the good things that are happening here, and also to share with each other. So I would like to have this moment to recognize that on this Monday, we will be commemorating Reverend Martin Luther King Jr.'s life and legacy around Snohomish and King County and throughout the state and the nation. We'll be doing this through music, oratory, and through the arts. And our own Bothell High School will honor Martin Luther King on January 17th at an extended assembly. I believe the time is 7:09 PM, I am confirming that. It will be held at the North Shore Performing Arts Center, and at that assembly, North Shore School District will also honor a local Bothell family. It will, our family is the CP and Dorothy Johnson family who contributed to our school district and our community. In 1980, the CP Johnson Humanitarian Award was established by the North Shore School Board, and for over 20 years, students at our elementary, junior high, and high schools were honored and recognized as humanitarians. CP Johnson was the North Shore School District Minorities Council and contributed very many things to our school district and community. He was a member of the Kiwanis, he also was one of the first Black families to move to Bothell with his wife Dorothy. Mabel Harris, Grandma Harris, lived to be 100, and was a leader in Mount Zion Church in Seattle, and Freddie Braxton was a teacher at Seattle Public Schools. This family, the Johnson-Harris and Braxton family, really made an impact on the Bothell community. They helped us to understand the importance of value and diversity and respecting each other throughout all our cultures. This year, North Shore School District reestablished the CP Johnson and Dorothy Johnson Humanitarian Award. It hasn't really happened for the past, let's see, 20, 18, 90? They stopped after 20 years. So this is an honor for our students to be recognized for the value they give to their schoolmates and to their community, and I'm very, very excited. I hope that some of you will be attending, I think that Councilmember McNeil will be attending, I will be out of town, but I've now got you a seat saved. Anybody else who would like to go, please let me know, and I'll make sure that they recognize that you're there.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Okay. I have a couple things, actually. So in talking about Dr. Martin Luther King, I wanted to mention that Councilmember McNeil and I attended the latest meeting of the Milo Group, which is multicultural elected local officials. And we had a discussion about an event that that group is planning for an African-American male wellness walk in Renton, I believe it's July 20th, in a stadium, Renton Stadium? I don't remember what the call of it. Yeah, and so I thought that was important for everyone to know that that's being worked on. This past week, I attended the East Side Chamber breakfast, and just wanted to mention it, it was the first time they had invited not just representatives from the state senate and House of Representatives, but also local officials, and it was local elected. It was fascinating because there was a real interaction with kind of the state level saying what they wanted to do, and then the locals saying, well, wait a minute, because one of the, one of the topics was minimum density requirements, which as you may imagine is not super popular, having the state tell us what we have to do because we feel that we know our land and our area best. So that was an interesting conversation. I sat next to Mayor Chalmak, and he was saying that the conversations about the transportation was the same as 16 years ago. Not enough, not enough, not enough. But he said what was different was there were actually several people from the business community that got up and said, we need a state income tax. And they also, there was a lot of conversation about rehauling our regressive tax system, and he thought that was very different from anything he'd ever heard before. So it was just kind of interesting. Who knows where it'll go or anything. After that, I, the following day, I attended the East Side Chamber meeting, Chamber of Commerce meeting in Bellevue. They were discussing their legislative agenda, and I was invited to talk about the 405 capacity improvements. And so there was a pretty lively discussion about getting a coalition together to lobby for those, to get the tolling reauthorized. And so I think we're starting to make progress with getting a group of people, different cities and business owners and other stakeholders together to send a letter. And I believe our lobbyist has a draft, so I'll be reviewing the draft, and hopefully we'll be getting people signing on so we can hit the ground running with the fresh legislative session. The other topic that I wanted to bring up, and I think we're going to talk about it next week, but maybe to just give everyone something to think about, is we've now done the council liaisons to the different parks, parks planning, all the other, all the local boards for a year. And I have the luxury of being able to miss the meetings and watch them on TV or on YouTube, but no one else does. And so I just wanted us to think about if that's still what we want to do going forward. We had some options last year. They included having regular updates, the liaison, or I forget what the third option was. But anyway, one of the things that I think we could improve on, my sense is we all go and watch, but we don't participate, and that's fine because we don't want to be telling them what to do. However, I think the part that maybe we're missing is communicating to them what council's working on. And I'll give an example, and not to pick on anybody because this was the first year, but I know when we did the capital facilities meetings for the budget, Parks Board came with a recommendation to spend $5 million to have a reduced, I guess, master plan at the Park of Bothell Landing. Unbeknownst to them, council had already decided to move forward with master planning of all the properties along the river, and they had no idea. And so when that happened, there were some, I think there was a feeling that they had wasted their time. And so I'm just kind of looking at, from everybody's perspective, if there's a way that we can make sure that we don't have that happen again. Because I think the danger is you have people that are excited and involved, but if they feel like they really don't know what's going on and they're working and not understanding what council has in mind, then they're just wasting their time. And so I don't know if we want to talk about it now, this is actually supposed to be a conversation, I feel like I'm talking at you. But I guess I'm looking for ideas or for people to think about, do we want to continue that way? Do we want it to work differently? How does everyone think that liaison way of communicating is working? Anyone? Councilmembers, audience?
I think there's great merit in having face-to-face with our boards and our commissions. And do we break that into smaller groups of maybe boards and commissions that are kind of related to each other, and we just do a little roundtable? You know, I don't know what that would look like, but I think there's great merit in what you're talking about. You're talking about a communication that talks about the goals that council's working on juxtaposed against the goals and tasks that the boards and commissions are working on. Am I understanding you correctly? Well, I think there's great merit in that, and I wouldn't mind giving up a Saturday morning or whatever it takes to have those conversations happen.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I thought about is maybe rather than attending the meetings, and we can always attend meetings, but would it be a better use of time to have the liaison meet with the chair and just have coffee and talk about what council's working on, what the particular board and commission's working on? I just feel like there's not, we're all kind of in our silos, and it just makes for maybe some wasted effort where we don't need to. Councilmember McNeil?
I would agree, and I think, you know, maybe having an opportunity for a little bit more dialogue and communication between the committees would be good. How we do that, I think, is open for discussion. I don't want to put any more workload on any one specific group of people, subset of people, but I think it's important that we at least know what they're working on and they know what we're working on. But how we get there, it's, you know, maybe it's more conversation around it, but I like the idea of having, you know, more communication with them, or hearing from them, or them hearing from us, or work plans, or something.
Yeah, and I was inspired by some of our interviews because there were some really great ideas, right? Really great ideas, but that person's going to be going in as a new person, and are they going to be, are they going to feel empowered to, as a new person to go in and say, I have this idea, and I think we should do it, and how will that be received? Is there a better way to kind of allow people that freedom to push some of these ideas? I thought some of the Parks Board comments were just amazing, really, really great ideas, and how do we help facilitate some of that happening? So those are just some random thoughts that I had. Anyway, anyone else want to add anything? Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I know, with arts, they want to know what we're thinking, and I want to know what they're thinking because they're the ones that have the expertise in it. I'm just the liaison. And as far as some of the people that we saw tonight that had wonderful ideas, I think it's our job to put them in a position to where they can put those ideas to good use.
Yeah, I guess I just wonder, like, how much should council get involved with the work plans of the boards? You know, I don't want to dictate what they do, but that conveyance of ideas, I think, is really important, and also just giving them the, not authority, but the permission to just go for it. You know, I'm not sure how we do that or what the best way to do that is, but maybe staff can mull and come up with some ideas. I know something like this conversation is supposed to happen next week, or February 5th as well. 5th as well. You look like you want to say something, Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't know the answer to this, but maybe is, if there's an example of how other cities work, maybe I can, you know, maybe we can each reach out to somebody and see how they're dealing with their committees and other council members around the area, and then maybe we can collaborate on that and figure out how we want to, as a council, how we want to tackle that.
And if I may, I might suggest, even though I'm the liaison for the Parks Committee, I feel like I want to know what each one of them is doing. So what is the Planning Commission doing? What is LTAC doing? You know, what is each of those committees doing? And somehow, I'd like to be able to hear from all of them. Or at least to know, what did you do last year? You know, kind of where, where are you going, or where, where have you been, or where are you going? That kind of thing.
Well, and I think councilmember Zornz was really good at telling us what LTAC is doing, and really, the place for that would be the council committee reports. I know we've done some of that with Human Services, but yeah, maybe we just have to be really, as individuals, just make sure we come back and report what we're, what the meetings are about when we're there. I haven't actually talked a lot about Planning Commission, because I figure we're going to see it, but maybe it's, maybe it's better if we just all commit to, to giving a, a report every once in a while, just so we all know. I mean, Planning Commission, you know, we kind of set their docket, but I think it's important for us all to be reminded what they're working on, what's coming. And I think it's the same for Parks and Landmark Board and all the others. I just, I think communication's always the key. I'm a talker, so that's how I deal with. Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, I think I like, I liked what you were saying about maybe just having more interaction with the chair of whatever board you're doing the liaison with, just because I know the, usually the agenda is fairly packed on when you're attending there, and so kind of going in and hijacking it with kind of, you know, your, the council priorities or what the council's doing. But I think I'm going to try talking with the chair, you know, maybe just set aside, go get a coffee or a Blizzard or something.
No, I like that idea, because I feel like it's a little bit awkward when I go to the Planning Commission meetings, because I don't want people to be looking at me for, well, what's the right thing to do? And I've even had conversations with them, you have your process, we have ours. You do what you think is right, and then we'll decide what we think is right, or if it's different. So it's really important that we don't impose ourselves, but it's also, I don't want to stop the conversation, because I think there's so many great ideas that people have, and any way that we can help facilitate that their work, I think, would be really helpful. So, Councilmember Zornz?
Providing that guidance, so they don't go the wrong down.
Yeah, or just if they have questions about, how does this, how does it work? I'm a new member, and how do I get my ideas out there? You know, is this something that's even in our purview as a, as a board member? Anyway, maybe we should all meet with our new people that are on the, you know, our, our new members. I don't know. I'm just throwing stuff out there.
So quick question, that we continue, you know, each council member has their representative, you know, the groups that they go to. Would there be a place for, and we're going to have these councils, we're going to try these council conversations for a while? So maybe what we do is we go into, you go into Planning Commission, or, you know, whoever the group is, and you sit, and your job is to be an observer, but before council conversations, you have had 10, 15 minutes with Planning Commission, where you've just said, okay, tell me what you, what do you need to know from city council? What are some, you know, what, tell me what's on your mind. And then you come to council conversations, you tell us what, whatever that question or comment or concern is that they have, we dialogue, and we say, yes, tell Planning Commission, da, 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 da. And then the next time you're there, you say, this is the feedback from city council about, they appreciate you've done, or whatever the comment is, as a follow-up. And if we just do that quarterly, maybe that's a great way to have a connection with the communication between city council and the different boards and commissions. If they're willing to, you know, give 10, 15 minutes at the start of one of their meetings to have that kind of conversation, but maybe that's. And then each council member plays the messenger, bringing the messages back and forth, without tapping into everybody, you know, yet another day to have another meeting. But the, the other idea that you had is that you meet with the chair, you know, that makes sense as well, if you're trying to keep it as simple and undemanding as possible.
Yeah, I just know that I go to a ton of meetings, a ton, and is two hours of watching Planning Commission or Parks Board the best way to get at what we need? I guess that, that's what I was thinking about. But I'm open, I just, I wanted to maybe get feedback on how it's working and how it could be improved, so. Councilmember McAuliffe?
So before I begin, I just want to let the public know that OPA is Open Public Meeting Act, because we use acronyms sometimes, and they don't know. So when you spoke about the fact that we don't really get to have conversations, it is because of Open Public Meeting Act. But let me just say, maybe what would be beneficial, I'm listening to everyone, is that if each of us who are the liaison for that group meet with the chair and discuss, how would you best like to relate to the council? What would the council be able to do to help you? And maybe they could give us that kind of, you know, information.
Yeah, or maybe it's just up to each individual council member what works best for them, as long as they can bring the information back and forth. Maybe it doesn't matter how they do it. Okay, are there any other topics? Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I got a whole bunch. No, kidding. First, and most importantly, I would like to thank Councilmember McAuliffe and the deputy mayor for bringing up the important work that we do regionally for cultures, different cultures. And Martin Luther King Day is very near and dear to many people within this region for the, all the work he did in paving the way for, for African-Americans and people alike from many different cultures. So first and foremost, thank you for that. And celebrating Bothell High School, to have something, an event like that is very special to have that here within our community, and it just shows yet again the welcomingness of our community and our school district. The deputy mayor brought up Milo. One of the things that Milo is, Milo is a group of elected officials around this region that are multicultural elected officials. And one of the things that we're trying to do is do work to show kids, youth that look like us, that they too can do the things that we're doing. So we're trying to set an example for them to know that they can also hold these positions. And one of the things that the group, as a, as an example, did this last meeting was to, to have a competition between mayors, so we will be talking to our mayor, other mayors, to get people out and do the walk. The walk that the deputy mayor brought up is about African-American Men Wellness Walk is not just about African-American men, but in wellness in general for all people, getting out and being healthy. And me, myself, I'm going to take this walk very seriously, make sure that I get my checkups, but I challenge everybody else on council throughout the community to also go get themselves checked. So that's one of the powerful messages that Milo is helping put forth right now. Everybody on council knows, and the city staff, everybody knows, near and dear to me is youth, in making sure we all, we took a trip to Bellevue Boys and Girls Club. We heard a little bit about that tonight, and one of the committee gentlemen that was applying for a committee. Having youth activities is becoming more and more critical throughout our region, because we're running out of open space, and we're running out of fields. And one of the things that we can do is, as leaders and as cities, is strive to find ways to do public-private partnerships. And we have an event that's happening, not in the City of Bothell, but in, in Woodenville. But this event that's happening is for, it happens to be for one sport, it's for the sport of lacrosse. But what we're doing is we're trying to bring as many people together as we can to find private partnerships that can partner with us as the cities to bring these facilities, like indoor sports facilities, training facilities, hopefully academic-style facilities, robotics, Lego camps, things that kids can do. So we're trying to raise awareness around that, and I know that it's near and dear to everybody on this council to try to find ways to do that. So there's an event coming up this weekend on the 19th, so hopefully, everybody can attend. But if not, the important message there, there's an event for a specific sport of lacrosse, but the, the message is, we need to find more places like this for kids to go and recreate. And, you know, personally, I don't want my kids on the devices all the time, I want them out playing. And this, this is what my passion is. The other thing is our senior center. Tom, councilmember Agnew and I sit on the NPRSA. The senior center is a facility that was, is within our community. It is going to need some work coming up. And I think there's an important message that all council members need to understand is what the work is, is going to be needed on this facility, what impacts there might be on our community as far as levies and things like that. The city manager has offered to come and help sit in on that meeting coming up tomorrow, the 16th. There's, there's a message there, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our seniors and our senior center, but we want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible for our community. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew about the, the issues and the things that are happening at the NPRSA as well. Last, I'd like to say, Parks. You know, in our committee, we had people talking about the different parks. What was, one of our questions was, what is your favorite park in Bothell? And I honestly, when I thought about, when I asked that question, what is my favorite park? And I actually honestly can tell you, the City of Bothell is my favorite park, because the City of Bothell is my playground. I don't know, it just, all of a sudden, overcame me when we're having that, those conversations and meeting with those folks. And I got to tell you, every last ounce of me, the City of Bothell is my, is my favorite park, the entire city. So I think for what the things that we're doing, meeting with our committees is, is important. This conversation that we're having right now, I think, is long overdue. I hope that it grows. It grows into much more. Maybe it's a time when we're sitting around a big table, because I feel like when we're up here, you know, as crazy as it sounds, it doesn't, it doesn't feel as natural as when we're sitting down there with everybody and we're together. So thank you for allowing me the time to talk about that. I think this is, having our voices heard is very important, so thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember McAuliffe, are you sure you don't have any other updates or things you wanted to? Oh, okay. Fair enough, fair enough. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh. Councilmember McNeil made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, all in favor. Place your votes. Oh, you can vote too if you disagree, Councilmember Agnew. Let's do a hand vote, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously with mayor Im absent and excused. Have a great week.